All right, it's 6:01. I'll call to order the regular meeting with closed session for Thursday, February 20th, 2020. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Quagliano. Mr. Fleck.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Garen.
Here.
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yeah.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item number two is a motion to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Garen. Can we have a roll call?
Now it's on. This is your button here, okay? Now it's on. By turning on your microphone. Otherwise, no one will hear your answer and you won't be able to use it. The light gets super bright, and that means that the microphone is on. And the reason...
Oh Lord. I'm so tired. I'm like, if you're talking to me all about sleep right now. My name? Oh no, this is not my chair. I know, I have my chairs. My chairs.
When you press it, it gets much brighter. It comes with a microphone. You need to take a few seconds to press the microphone, give your answer, and then... Why you need to be able to hear you... Green lights on, bright lights. It looks... Bright lights. And I think it's very sensitive.
Okay, it's 7:06. Thank you for indulging us. We had a few minutes to wrap up what we needed to downstairs. We're out of closed session. There is action to take. Let's have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Meyerino? Mrs. Melendi? Mr. Garin?
Here.
Mr. Fleck?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
They're all here. One action item to take out of closed session is with respect to student 2020-02. I'm gonna make a motion that student 2020-02 be expelled for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year and all of the 2021 school year. Recommended that the expulsion be held in abeyance based on his acceptance and successful completion at the alternative placement Evergreen Academy in Union, Illinois. If student 2020-02 is not accepted at Evergreen Academy or while enrolled at Evergreen Academy violates the terms of his enrollment, then the expulsion held in abeyance will be withdrawn and the expulsion will go into effect immediately. The Board of Education supports the... The Board of Education will support the recommendation. He would be eligible to request an executive review to be completed prior to the end of the first semester of the 2020-2021 school year. At that time, if student 2020-02 has continued to meet the expectations set between high school and Huntley High School and Evergreen Academy, he may be accepted back early to start the second semester of the 2020-2021 school year. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Garin. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano? Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's have Sowichfield come up.
Thank you for having us tonight for the second Heinemann pledge. Officer Andrew Dykstra will give you some background on his informal unofficial student ambassadors before they say the pledge. Thank you.
So, thank you, School Board, for having me. I'm super excited. To bring these students in the first couple of weeks, they really assisted me with the new role, whether it was just highs in the hallway or networking with other students. It's a privilege to bring them forward and have them recognized to the School Board just as a thank you for helping me come in my new role here at District 15.
Hi, I'm Alexandra Moreno and I'm from 8th grade.
Hi, my name is Isabella Kibowski and I'm in 8th grade.
Hi, I'm Benjamin Gausch and I'm 8th grade.
Hi, my name is Jordan Crowley and I'm in 6th grade.
Hi, my name is Daniel Jarzbeck and I'm in 1st grade.
I'm Abby Wrestler and I'm in 6th grade.
I'm Abby Wrestler, and I'm in 6th grade.
Hi, I'm Lea Perez, and I'm from 8th grade.
I'm Cotton Boyle, and I'm from 7th grade.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical and the spiritual.
How are you? I might have forgotten your name. I don't think I've had you before. Oh, your doctor's out. Oh, yeah. Now I remember. I'm in charge now. And I'm on YouTube too. I can't tell if I'm more important on YouTube or in front of the board seat. Do I like push for an emotion or something?
Well, hi, everyone. Thanks for leading us to the pledge. Thanks for coming to our meeting tonight. I'm curious, though, how did you get selected and why did you accept to come over here today? Anybody can answer. Do you know how you were selected?
I try to remain cordial. I try to remain cordial with most everybody, and that applied over to where are you, officer? That applied over to Officer Dykstra over there, and I suppose that's what got me qualified and accepted.
Excellent. Anyone else? I heard a lot of you guys are involved in activities. What kind of activities are you involved in at the school?
I was involved in the Snowhawks through and going to... Um, what was it called?
Alpine?
Alpine.
We just heard about the Snowhawks' last meeting, I think.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun and meeting new people and seeing some older friends.
Good. What other activities do we have?
I'm in service club.
Good. What kind of services do you do?
It's kinda like you go over to like your past teachers and you like help them out with like stuff they need help with.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So I know I'm gonna ask this question with the officer right off to my side here, but do you guys like having a resource officer at the school?
Definitely. It makes me feel far safer.
Okay, good. Yeah. Excellent.
I would hope they're paying you enough.
Yeah. You're gonna be at Zany's this weekend, aren't you? Okay, we're gonna come up behind you. We're gonna take some pictures. We'd like Officer Dykstra to come up as well. Maybe can stand off to the side with us and we'll get some pictures. Okay? Thank you again.
So when does my paycheck come in? Fair enough. I can accept that.
Yeah, if you guys can wheel in closer. Or you can stand up, yeah, you can stand up behind. All right, we'll transition before we move on to the rest of the agenda. Sadly, the district lost a member of the Huntley community. Very well-known and well-liked student James Jimmy Kolansky. And a lot of people felt that loss. I'd like to just take a moment of silence for Jimmy. And our heart goes out to his family and his friends in this time of grieving. Thank you. Next item will be the academic spotlight. Dr. Schlitzer is not here, so I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Rowe.
All right, tonight, we're very excited to be highlighting our incubator program, which is completing its first year at Huntley High School. And Mr. Towns tutored it, so we'll turn over Mr. Town. Give us a little highlight.
No, I guess it wasn't. So, thank you for having us here today. I brought with me a team from our incubator class. It is an entrepreneurship class, and the students work in teams. The easiest way I can explain it is it is Shark Tank the class. And actually, last week, these students pitched their ideas to local business people for funding. And some of them received some funding, and some of them were told they need to work on their business plan. So that is currently where we're at. The team that I have with me today is What's Poppin', and I will let them tell you what's poppin'.
All right, I'd like to introduce myself. We are What's Poppin', and we're from the 3rd hour incubator class. I'm Mark Vandy.
I'm Isaiah Wilkerson.
I'm Mitchell Walsh.
Hey, we're What's Poppin'.
So I can't tell you how many times in my life that I sat at home on a Friday or Saturday night, and the only thing I wanted to do was to find somebody to hang out with. This comes from my long battle with depression and anxiety growing up, you know, not being able to talk to people, and that's a big problem of this generation.
All right, with me, I moved here in 8th grade, right? I'm a outgoing person. I love to talk to people, right? But once it's the summer, there's nothing to do. And people are going out, but I didn't know what they were doing, so this problem right here that we're solving changed.
I think a lot of us have struggled with the same problem, especially high schoolers in Huntley. There's not a lot to do in Huntley, and with our generation going on their phones so much, using social media, we are becoming less and less likely to interact with each other in person, and that's exactly what we want to bring back with What's Poppin'. So What's Poppin' is an app that... or a website that will have social interaction, so these will include local events. So on a Friday night, when people are sitting at home, they can always show up to this event. So let's say it's at Bolero, the local bowling alley. We can host this event and try and get as many people there, and the goal is for these people to make friends and just have a good time and enjoy themselves, because we found that's the best part about life is really being happy, and that's what we want to bring back to everyone. So we are targeting high schoolers to start with, because we are high schoolers. We know how they like to move and work, and we think that high schoolers are a lot of people suffering with this problem, so they could make a great impact there. And there's been things done like this before, but nothing like we're trying to do. We want to be at every event. We want to make it special, every single event, so... Yeah. So like I said, we are a service, and we do sponsored events for high schoolers, so pop and hang out. So like I said earlier, if we're going to the bowling alley, that's where an event would be. So we also have like other events in the works. So let's say we want to go to a tubing place or a skiing place, or we even just wanna kick back at a basketball game, like we're gonna be telling you about here in a little bit. We want every student to be involved. We want everybody to be involved, because like the experiences we've had, you know, it's not fun being that kid sitting at home on Saturday night, Friday night, without that friend or the people to reach out to.
All right, so this is our unique value proposition. So basically, what we... Why we're unique is because we are the loneliest generation ever physically proven. And why we're unique is we really just set up a lot of social interactions and just get everyone out of their house and get them to our hangout.
So we do have some competition or some apps that have tried to do this before. One called 20 recently came out a few months ago, and it's very similar to us, except they don't sponsor events like we do, so they're not at the events. That's a user can upload the events. And then they have also other ones like Meet Me that they had a problem with sending unwanted messages to people. And Facebook, they have like events going on, but nothing specific to your town like this. So we've been able to look at all these kind of and take what's bad, what's good from them, and improve our business.
All right, so this is our final. All right, so our startup cost, though, as Mark already said, we want to do a delegate event. We want to keep it cheap, so we want people to have fun at a cheap price. So what we want to do is use stickers like on my Chromebook, so very noticeable. People pick stickers, and they'll like it. Also, we want to do shirts to promote our business logo, WC that you saw before. Small logos, people will like it, people will see if people want to wear it.
And we think these are so crucial to our business, because at the high school, everyone carries around a Chromebook. You know, you smack a sticker right in front of that Chromebook, so many people are seeing that sticker every single day when you're pulling it out. It's just advertising, very cheap. Same with shirts, you know, everybody loves to wear a new shirt, promote a business at your high school too.
And with this total, like Mr. Town already said, when the mentors they come in and kinda ask for funding almost, we did get the funding for all $225, so they're really happy for us, they're really excited. So now if you go in, that's a good event, and that's the stuff we're looking for.
So the ways... The different ways that we make revenue, we have three different ways. One would be the money from the sponsored event. So like I used Bolero earlier, let's say people sign up, it's gonna cost them $10 to come. They're gonna get like pizza, bowling, a hangout, and everything. And if we reserve the lanes for $7 a person, we'd be making about $3 on that person. So that's a way that we're gonna be making money, as well as What's Poppin' memberships. So we haven't talked about this yet, but for the people who are really liking What's Poppin', there's a way for them to get like a premium membership in a way. So this would include many different benefits for them, such as shirts, discounted prices, like free tickets to bring a friend to an event. So that way, we're letting other people know about it too. And then we also have the third one of running ads on our website, but this isn't gonna happen right now. This is gonna be once our website gets a little more clicks and everything, then we can start to run ads and make money off those.
All right, so this is our website. So I built this website from scratch on a Wix website creator. And so basically, there's different tabs, so like the first one's What's Poppin', which is the main page. And it goes to About and tells you about us, and then Local Events. It's gonna be like events that are going on like Huntley, like the farmer's market or something like that, and they can... We can post that on there. And then What's Poppin' Events, that's gonna be like our event that we're having next Friday, the tailgate before the basketball game. And then Forum is basically where you sign up and you can post events, and we'll monitor that, so we don't get any bad events on there. Videos is basically gonna be where we put our videos, recaps of all of our stuff that we do. Book Online, that's gonna be where everyone can go to, like go... Where everyone can go to sign up for our events, and then there's a login for the website, and then we have all the social medias up there, and you can click on it.
So we do have two kind of different events, and this may have came off as a little confusing. So we have local events, so if a user goes on our app or website and says, hey, I'm looking for, you know, I wanna have people over. I don't care who it is, you know, high schoolers come over, I wanna make new friends or something, or they wanna meet at like a park or something like that. They could always upload an event themselves, but that will be monitored by us, so that nothing like bad will be happening on those two. And then we have the What's Poppin' events, and those are the sponsored events, like the bowling alley we talked about.
All right, so our MVP, our most viable product.
So our most viable product is how can we test our business in the simplest of terms, not spend any money, and just see if this idea is really working. So what we thought of is we want to sponsor the boys' basketball game on February 28th. That's next Friday, and it's boys' senior night. So what we were thinking was, we have people call in a little bit earlier, 5:30. We're gonna have pizza provided. It's gonna be... We're gonna have a bags tournament going on, so it's gonna be like a little hangout. We're gonna have music going on before. And this is out gonna be by the fieldhouse too, because there is a track meet that day too, so people will be walking in, they'll be seeing our business, and they'll be thinking, oh, what's this? So it'll get them curious, and instead of tucking us away in the corner of the high school.
And so also with this, we kinda do our own experiment. We kinda ask our own, like our own friends, would you come to this event? Yes or no, be honest with us. A lot of them say yes, because a lot of them do not do anything on Fridays or Saturdays. They're inside, they play Xbox, do nothing. People say, yeah, we'll come, eat, have fun, do what people play games. Because with these games, we win gift cards. We don't wanna win money. It's the money we win. And just coming to a game, maybe trying to support the prom party, right? We figured it should be a good investment, and with this, the money that we make could go for like shirts, stickers, and be cheaper.
So it's not just the tailgate before too. So after the tailgate at 7 o'clock, everyone who's attended will be going to the gym, and we're gonna be sitting together watching the boys' basketball game. And then at halftime, we got this approved. We have a little special called the What's Poppin' halftime shootaround. So many of you are familiar with the Buffalo Law Wing shootaround. We have 30 seconds to make a plethora of shots. So we're gonna be doing that, and we're gonna be selecting a couple random people who attend our event to be doing that, and they'll have a chance at prizes and shirts with that too.
All right, so our future plans. So what we want to do is still stay with high school students. So we want to expand to all the high schools, such as Crystal Lake High School, South Central, Alaska, Panther, PR. Because we know a lot of people from those schools. We figure to do it from our school, but we do it the same with our schools. And also, we want to do way off in the future to senior citizens, because we know they'll... They have nothing to do with us, just like us.
We did talk to some of them. We're not making that up.
I didn't mean it in that way, but we're saying we want people to be, you know, in the community.
Yeah.
Everyone to be together, having a good time, you know, just having a good moment. And also, what we want to do is make, you know, things easier for everyone, so make an app. So an app does take a long time to make. If you look it up, they'll say it's like $10,000 to make. But you can just make that right from your home, but it does take a long time, because we all have experience in programming. So we know that what we can do, but it takes a long time to replicate the feature at this point.
So we know we'd like to do these things, but next Friday is the big thing first. We're seeing if this business and this idea really works, and, you know, will people be willing to pay and attend the event?
I know we didn't clarify, but with the pizza, so we know like concessions is like maybe $3 to $4. Do you think about narrowing down the price to maybe $2 for a pizza? If he doesn't like cheap food, but still the same quality, we still have the fun. Thank you.
All right, we'll open it up for questions now.
Quick advice, don't use the word cheap anytime. Okay, use a different word to describe it, reasonable, whatever, but don't describe it as cheap. Don't make them think they're getting something that's substandard in any way, shape, or form, so... And I got this from a referral meeting today, and that was one of the things we were talking about, is don't undersell what you're providing, okay? So, yeah, you're... Be proud of what you're providing and tell them that it's a fair, reasonable price. It's not cheap. I'll just say that I can't tell you how rewarding it is to see an idea and a lot of work, you know, from Mr. Bealan to Mr. Redoff, Mr. Town, and a number of us in the background to come and to come to fruition with you in this business. So congratulations. You represent our high school so well. We're really proud of you and really proud of the work that you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I concur. You guys, great presentation. Great idea. You took something that was internal to you, and you're coming up with a solution to that, and you're sharing that with other people. And you're figuring out a way to maybe make a profit off it. That's great. And I... And I, 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 I like how you addressed all these different aspects, you had answers for them, you had explanations for why you chose to do certain things. I like how you're starting things out and you guys are going to go places.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree, this, this was really rewarding to see this because this is our first year in this program. So to see it from the concept to what you guys are doing is great. And I think this is great for our social emotional learning to your specific, um, website. So I think that's, that's going to be beneficial for a lot of kids in our high school and then in our, in our area. Are you guys all seniors?
Yes, we are. And we also have another group member who's not here tonight, Ryan Soroka, he's also a senior.
I'm just wondering, you know, in a couple of months when you guys are off to bigger and better things, what's going to happen to the, your plan?
This might be, this might be the bigger and better thing.
I mean, you're still going to continue to work, I mean, what is your plan?
It's something we have to still think about because obviously we're so early on with this and, um, it's really just going to depend, I think, how it goes here and next Friday will tell a lot for us.
Yeah, good luck, I think that's a, a great, a great idea.
Thank you.
Well done.
We can grant that, wow.
Great job, guys. How many teams were there?
Twelve schools.
Twelve teams, okay. Great job, great job.
Thanks for having us again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I totally thought we were the Shark Tank Committee and we were going to have to like start bidding on your business or something. Alright, great. Thanks again, uh, next item on the agenda is staff recognition. Uh, who am I turning this over to? Mr. Bealan.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I am actually going to call Coach Andy Jacobowski to come up before I read these accolades, um, because it's, it's notable, come on up. I'm going to read, I, I typically don't have a script, but I think these accolades, I don't want to mess these up. I, I got to get these right, uh, but I do have a little off-script stuff that I do too, so just be prepared. Um, Coach Andy Jacobowski was inducted on January the 25th into the Illinois Basketball, uh, Coaches Association Hall of Fame. Uh, Coach Jacobowski has been the head coach, um, at Huntley High School since 2006 with a record of 327, 192 and 2. See, I, I run track and baseball isn't really my thing. And I love coming to see you coach and what you do, so I've learned a lot, just the numbers though, it's, it's a numbers game. But I, I got a lot to learn from him. Um, and his overall record of 20 years of coaching is 422 wins, 308 losses, uh, to 2. Uh, Coach Jacobowski's teams have won six FEC titles, seven regional titles, three sectional titles and fourth place, uh, 2010 finish along with the second place finish, uh, at the state level. Uh, Coach Jacobowski has also helped over 100, 120 players play at the collegiate level. That is an accomplishment, knowing that we have students that are playing, uh, at that level. So, uh, without further ado, I just want to give a huge congratulations to Coach Andy Jacobowski. The, the, uh, off-script piece that I, I will tell you is that coming here, uh, as, as the principal and going out and being at, at many other sports, um, the commitment of the team, his coaching staff, um, our supportive parents, um, is, is, is unreal. The family atmosphere that he's provided, but it's just a way of, of a calm demeanor, even when he's upset, it's like, is he upset? I mean, he, he's so calm and so passionate about the work, but the way that, um, our young men respond to him, uh, the way that our, our coaching staff can work underneath him and he allows them to do what they do best, um, is something that is second to none, uh, when you look at, at coaches, um, across the nation, uh, especially in a, in a high school sport. And seeing Huntley Park District and, uh, some of the games that I've gone to, knowing, uh, what they aspire to be, they are going to definitely be in good hands. And I know that 120 is going to double, uh, with Coach Jacobowski's tenure here at Huntley High School. So thank you and thank you for what you do for our students.
Thank you.
You get to say, thank you.
Watch that. Alright, thank you. Alright, so I had a seven-minute presentation that I gave and I basically, you know, it was an honor to be inducted in Illinois High School Baseball Coach Association, so forth, so forth. Thank my high school coach, my college coach, and then I kind of went through, um, thinking Boylan was my first stop, um, and then moving on to Jacobs and then moving on to ECC. And then finally coming to Huntley. So this is, this was my portion of Huntley that, uh, that I included. So in 2005, I was offered the position of head coach, um, at Huntley High School. Thank you to former athletic director Bruce, Bruce Blumer and former principal Dave Johnson for giving me the opportunity to come back to high school baseball. It was difficult at the beginning of changing our culture at Huntley, but over time, our kids bought into our team approach. You're only as good as what your talent is and we've been blessed by having hard-working kids who sacrificed themselves for the betterment of the team. Thank you to all our current and former players, this award would not be possible without believing in each other as well as buying into our system. The relationships that we have formed over the years is something that I will never forget. Um, thank you to all my, uh, current and former, um, coaches. And I listed them, Coach Furtex, Sassy, Madlinsky, Matsy, Lavacek, Neronho, Busegley, Acostalik, Jennings, Morehart, Klein, Pollock, Landvik, Russman, O'Neal, Walker, Jackson, Johnson and Tepper. You have supported our players and carried out our vision to make our program so successful. Can't thank them, uh, enough for all the sacrifices that they have made and for being so loyal to our program. Then I moved on and congratulated all the Fox Valley coaches and my parents came up from Fort Myers, so I thanked them, thanked my children, my wife, and then concluded. And it was about, it was supposed to be six minutes, but it was like, I don't know, eight minutes or so, but, alright. So as I, as you guys know, I'm pretty soft-spoken, it's a struggle for me to get up here, good thing I got a speech degree to do this, so, um, but all in all, it's, it's an incredible award and it wouldn't be possible for, you know, having talented players and, and coaches that, um, you know, have helped me along the way. So it's all for them, not for me, so.
Thank you for having us.
And if you haven't seen Huntley High School Baseball do their warmups before a game, it is really something to see. Coach Jacobowski's a big part of that and it's really cool. Moving on, um, item number seven is public comment. Mr. Armstrong, is there any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, there being none, we move on to revision and adoption of the agenda. I always struggle through this, so bear with me. Looks like we have, uh, an associate superintendent's report, is that correct? Okay, uh, Dr. Schlifter is not here, so I think item 10 is gone. Uh, Mr. Altmeier, do you have a report? Okay. Mr. Zare?
No update.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Budzinski?
I do have an update.
Okay, very good, yes. Um, Dr. Del Castillo? Okay. Uh, looks like we have some community relations, I have a president's report, we have a superintendent's report, okay. Uh, alright, that being said, I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with the following revisions, removal of items 10, 11, 12 and 14. Is there a second? Second from Ms. Malendi, all those in favor say aye? Opposed? Alright. Uh, that motion carries, so we move on to, uh, Ms. Lombard.
Thank you, so my update is the Wellness Committee, um, review. As you know, uh, per board policy, um, we need to, um, convene the district wellness committee, uh, annually to review multiple different areas to make sure that, um, all of our areas, um, are in compliance with our policy. And so that meeting was held on January 28th. Um, you'll see the members in the memo, uh, that were listed there that, um, were in attendance and the various components, uh, that they represented. And, um, we're happy to report that yes, we, the findings are that we are in compliance with all on the various areas. But I think one of the things that's important to note is while this committee only meets once a, um, once a year annually, all of these different, um, departments meet continualistically, um, to look at the various areas when we talk about wellness, whether it's with nutrition or social emotional, uh, the curricular areas, the staff components of that. Because as we know, if we are not, um, making sure that the social emotional needs, that the nutritional needs, the health needs of our students and our staff are being met, um, they're not ready to learn, they're not ready to teach. And so while it is once a year, this work is going on, um, continuously. So I do, did want to just kind of point out some of the, um, highlights of topics from each of the departments, um, that, uh, shared in this on some things that we will be looking forward either to be doing, um, second semester here or on to next year. And so, um, that first area is, um, with the food and nutrition, the food service department. Um, not a lot of changes in the nutritional components that are, um, being mandated. However, one, um, area that, uh, they did talk about were some of the, um, ways that they're promoting throughout the year and into next school year, healthy li- lifestyles, so it's more than just that nutrition, but some of the, um, healthy lifestyles, um, fun educational ways that they're going to be doing into the cafeteria. And so just again, taking that part of the curriculum and expanding that, um, into each of the kitchens and the cafeteria, I thought was, uh, just a way to show that support. And so, um, that's really exciting, they were going to try out some of those here next semester coming forward. With the curriculum and instruction, uh, two areas just to highlight, um, one of those per school code was that LGBTQ education needs to be embedded in the history curriculum, um, that needs to be done by the year 21, 22. However, um, the district is ahead of, of that requirement and that has been implemented into the, the curriculum and into the schools, um, currently. And so that, that's fantastic, that that's, um, something that, uh, felt was very valued and is already being, um, embedded into the curriculum. And the other, um, just, there are lots of different things, um, that Mr. Johnson was able to, to talk about, but, um, another was, we talk about SEL and the social emotional learning and, um, was able to talk about some of the things at the secondary level. We know how they're being, um, implemented, um, with, um, our various tiers through elementary, um, with some of their social stories that they're doing, um, looking at those being embedded in the units. But at that secondary level, um, talking about how the, um, physical education department and PE and health classes are embedding SEL curriculum in. And so, um, really seeing how, uh, that, that regardless of what we're teaching, that, um, our staff are really taking, um, and understanding of the importance of SEL. And so there are some really, really neat things happening, um, at that level and, and what can we do then to, um, bring those down into the middle school and elementary and those departments as well. Health service, um, so in our, our nursing, there's some, um, different components that you'll see when we, um, get to handbooks, uh, a little bit, uh, later this spring, about some changes with just, um, medication administration, uh, some different areas where, um, students can self-administer. Um, and, uh, we'll be bringing those forward with some handbook and policy changes. Um, as well as really talked about, uh, ways that our health services department, um, they've been really doing a lot of training on school anxiety, um, mental health, school awareness, because a lot of times students are first being seen in the nurse's office. What signs and symptoms can they pick out to see maybe where students are in need? Um, so been doing some professional development and then tying that into, um, hopefully some parent university, uh, components there. Won't go into, uh, too much detail on the social emotional review, as you know, um, we are in a, a two-year review on that. And so later, um, the curriculum department later this spring will be bringing more, uh, information on the SEL needs, uh, assessment and the, the various teams that are going on, um, currently on that and what their recommendations. So I don't want to steal their thunder on that, but lots of really, uh, great things going on. And then that, um, staff wellness component, as you know, we do, um, the wellbeing screenings. But what are some other things that maybe we as a district can look at, um, as opportunities to tie, uh, in for our staff? Whether they would be mindfulness activities or workshops, uh, possibly partnering, um, with our community partners, Northwestern, um, fitness challenges, looking at possibly, um, talking about doing a, an employee wellness fair and after that came up, but the, the next week, Adam, you got some information about, um, lots of partners, uh, looking at how can they help support our staff here within the district? So those will be some of the things that we will be looking at in the area of staff wellness. And then, um, some additional recommendations on, uh, topics for parent university, um, whether, again, going into, uh, more deeply with that school anxiety, um, talking about how do I talk with my child about their emotions or wellness? Um, what should I do, lots of times, when do I keep my student home? When should I be sending them to school with different illnesses? Um, topic of transgender or just current trends, um, with health and wellness, especially, um, when we're looking at, um, things again with, um, social emotional, mental, uh, health awareness and then, um, whether it could be, uh, vaping, um, different kind of components of whatever that current transit trend is that we're seeing, um, within our school district. So a lot of really good ideas when you bring all those departments around, um, to what can we do to support our students, uh, to be ready for our learning? And what can we do to support our staff to continue to be the best effective teachers there for our children? Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Lombard. And that moves us over to Dr. Budzinski, I believe, item 13.
Sure, thank you very much. Um, a, a brief update tonight on a topic that we started hearing a fair amount about from the state legislature about a year ago, um, in student data privacy. Uh, this past August, the governor signed into law what we for a long time referred to as House Bill 3606. And it was a pretty, uh, a pretty tough bill that would have, in its original forms, made using technology in schools much more difficult than it is today. I don't want to start off by saying that we don't agree with what's in this bill. We think what's in, in this new law is actually very good for education. And it turns into a lot of, um, transparency work on our part, which we are all for. We have no problem meeting many of the requirements of, of this law and, and what we'll be looking to implement over the next 18 months. This law does go into effect, uh, July of 2021. So we have about 18 months to, to sort out some of these details, which is a good, fair amount of time. But when I start to go through some of the individual requirements, you'll see that it's a lot of work. It's going to take us a long time to get through all of this. Um, so I've got here just a quick list of, of kind of the high-level requirements as they pertain, uh, to school districts and what school districts are going to have to do to become compliant with these new laws. Some of them seem somewhat innocuous, some of them, maybe not so much. And I'll go just very, very briefly through. Now, I'll go just very, very briefly through the list. Right in order, annually post a list of operators and online services that the district uses. Technically, the way the law reads, we'll have to update that list twice per year, once in January, once in July. So twice a year, we're going to have to update that list. So what's on that list? As of this morning, we have about 1,500 different operators that we potentially share data with. So that list will have to be updated twice per year, for every operator that we share student data with. So you can see that these are no small tasks. And as such, you'll see, what I'll get to in the end of this is some of the costs associated with this particular mandate coming down. Number two, annually post data elements that the school collects, maintains, and discloses to any entity. Just the data points that we share with the State Board of Education is about 361 de-duplicated fields per student, times 9,158 students, is about 3.3 million data points. We have to list them. Not individually per student, just generally what do we share? And that's just one entity that we share with of that 1,500. A lot of it is, which is why I say it's de-duplicated data. We're treating ISB almost as another operator. So just as we would share data with Power School or any other company that we share data with, we're going to list them just the same way. Because we are in fact sharing data with them, and from our perspective, they're an outside vendor to us, which is why we're going to include them in that list as well. But that's not even the big platform, there, we have others that we have so many more data points about our students that it will put the 3 million data points to shame. So we will have thousands of data points that we'll have to list out on an annual basis. We have to generate the list, and it has to be published on our website. Transparency. Disclosure and transparency. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's going to be a list, it's going to be a lengthy, lengthy list. So I've been working with a number of other school districts to try to get to a pretty succinct list of what exactly it is that we'll have to post. But even just in basic form, it's a lot of data. And it's, again, it's not specific data about a student, it's that...
The type of data.
Exactly. Exactly. It's a lot. Who's going to read it?
Right. Where are you going?
Yep.
So, in your opinion, I know you're saying in theory it's good, now you understand in theory, yes, good. Practical application, the cost associated with it, and the value that data is there? What do you think the value is to somebody who's outside?
The intent of most unfunded mandates, we generally get behind. But this is quickly becoming the poster child for the Illinois General Assembly unfunded mandates. And, you know, I have been asked from Representative Ugaskey to Representative Wright, to give them a list of all of the unfunded mandates that cause us problems. Well, that's an impossible task, and I'm not going to do that. But I will use this...
This is a great example.
...as an example and give them a breakdown of what this is going to do to us in terms of time and manpower and potential online tool utilization to coordinate all this data just to post it, which may cost the district money of another software that we must maintain. So this is going to be a big one, which is why I asked Chris to share it with us.
So, and really, that's just the first couple items on the list? Some of these aren't so bad. So, I mean, I don't really have to go into gross detail on all of them, but then you see things like reporting data breaches within 10 days, and then notifying parents within 30 days. Well, obviously, we hope to never have that as a problem, but should it ever happen, it does put us in a position where we're then required, within these certain windows, to post information about any sort of data breaches that we may have, should we ever, ever have those issues. Again, we don't anticipate that. We would have reported it anyway. We would have reported it anyway. It's information about information to publish it. I would call it metadata, but... Yeah. So it's turning in, it's going to turn very quickly into a very lengthy and very involved process for us. Yep. Yep. That's why we're starting to have more and more of these conversations now. Tidy it up some.
But it's also why we're sharing it with you, because it's going to take us a year and a half to prepare for it.
Yeah, absolutely. So we literally are starting already, we've put some systems in place already to...
A year and a half to post data on our website, I should say.
Yeah, to gather all this data, get it cleaned up, to be able to post it. Will take that long, so... Also, interestingly, this didn't come through education in Springfield, it came through, it was a cybersecurity route. Education found out about this somewhat 11th hour, even when it was going through. So we fought pretty hard for several months to get this bill to where it is now, where at least it's workable. In its very original forms, there were a number of school districts that read the bill and literally said, "If this passes in its current form, we will just unplug the internet and not use the internet." I can't even imagine Huntley 158 without internet. And I just can't even imagine it. But that's basically how it read. It made it almost an impossibility to use online services. So it's in a better spot, it's still going to be just a monumental task to become compliant with this new one. Glad they entertained whatever questions you may have. Yep. There are certainly software companies out there that aren't necessarily close to this.
Alright. I'm going to let you talk to Dr. Bzinski kind of offline. I appreciate the question, and that's a good public comment issue, but your answer's best coming from Dr. Bzinski, the head of technology. Okay? Thank you. Thank you for that information, and hopefully they will clean that up. Mr. Quagliano will be writing his sternly worded letter to the bill sponsors, and we'll be good to go. Okay. Alright. Moving on to item 15, Community Relations, Mr. Armstrong, if you want to just take this one.
You have the FOIA report, I'll be happy to take any questions on that.
Any questions on the FOIA report? It's pretty straightforward. Okay, thank you very much. There being none, we'll move on. Moving on to the president's report, I have a legislative update brought to my attention from Illinois Association of School Boards and internally from Mr. Altmeier. Few people have something to say about this, but what this comes down to is the governor proposed his budget, and you know, he's really pushing for the graduated income tax. And even though he told us that education was very important, and we're going to put some funding in it, and things looked really good, suddenly, the proposed 350 million additional funds for evidence-based funding, there's going to be 150 million of that that might be held in reserves and only released if the graduated income tax passes, which could really change things for us significantly, you know. Have Mr. Altmeier say a little more on that. But what this comes down to is, there was certain promises about education, but suddenly it's saying, "Oh, except some of this is dependent on whether or not I get my graduated income tax." That was never part of the deal before, and suddenly it is. So that's the concern. I'll turn it over to Mr. Altmeier.
Yeah, thank you, more great news out of Springfield, I'm being sarcastic, of course. Yeah, the 350 million, just to bring everybody, you know, or put everybody on the same page, the 350 million is the amount that the state has set aside for the last several years since rolling out EBF year one. And that 350 million, what it has done for the district is provided an additional, every year, an additional, an approximate $700,000 of revenue, based on the fact that we are a Tier 2, borderline Tier 1 district. By taking 150 of that 300 million away, that $700,000 is estimated to be only $350,000 for the district. So the financial impact is pretty significant. It's pretty significant, especially if the graduated income tax doesn't pass. What does it mean if it doesn't pass? Are they going to keep it in reserve? Are they going to use it for other things at the state level? Or are they just going to kind of hijack school funding? We don't know, but it certainly puts a budget, puts everybody's budget and the state level kind of at risk. So that $350,000 of the portion of all of the increasing revenue for the district, it represents about 15% of the increasing revenue to the school district on an annual basis. Right now, right for the levy, we're going to collect 2.3% on the 70-plus million that we're pulling from property taxes. We count on the evidence-based funding, the increase in state funding of a little over 2%, and right now, with what the governor is proposing, you know, we might only be seeing a 1% increase in state revenue. So we have to certainly keep our eyes on that and do whatever we can to make that not happen. So just wanted to bring the board up to speed on that.
Any other comments? Thank you for bringing that to our attention, this is a biggie, this is a lot. So we'll have to monitor it and see how that goes, and maybe, again, add that to Mr. Quagliano's phone call.
This guy's gone.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Let's see, item 17, Superintendent's Report.
Alright, I have a handful of things to share with you this evening. First, with a strategic planning update, we've just completed our fifth community engagement session. And our next will be on March 10th, and it's a double presentation day. This is March 10th in the morning, from 9:00 to 11:00, we will have our Sun City presentation in the Drindle Ballroom. If any of you happen to be available in the morning, I would welcome your attendance. We will be putting together a compilation of presentations that will include everything. We'll cover academics, we'll cover finance, we'll cover the future of ed, we'll cover social-emotional learning as well as safety, and a slightly longer presentation for our Sun City residents that will ultimately culminate in a very similar work activity where we're bringing their voice into our next strategic plan. Later that evening, we'll be conducting our final community engagement session, where we will bring back all of the pillars that we've collected from each of the previous five. And in each of those events, the community members that have engaged in the process have left us with the five big takeaways that they believe are the most important aspects of the topic we presented on, that they'd like included in our next plan. So we'll be sharing all of those out in kind of a, kind of all-encompassing presentation, and asking for final feedback, is there anything that we've missed? Is there anything that you'd like to add for us moving forward? Then the next stages of that will be to work with a retired superintendent and one of the Unicom strategic planning specialists, and we'll build the plan toward, planning for our June presentation to you all seeking approval of the new five-year strategic plan. Onto the next thing, ISB strategic plan. I wish I could say that the Illinois State Board of Education had as ambitious of a plan for the future of education in Illinois as Huntley 158 does, but I unfortunately can't say that. Although some of the things that Dr. Ayala are doing are very noble, focusing our attention on continued efforts for educational equity, as well as improving our assessment system for faster results, so we can actually do something with the data, let alone maybe even getting some of the data back, i.e. the science assessment that took us three years to actually receive the data. What they're not including is any form of innovation to drive education forward in the state of Illinois whatsoever. As a leading pilot district in the state of Illinois on our competency-based ed pilot, I'm extremely disappointed to say that Dr. Ayala does not currently have anything explicitly in there in her plan to share the state board's continued support of that innovation. So what I've done in response to the complete absence of innovation to drive our state forward that her predecessor, Dr. Smith, felt so strongly about, is have engaged with all of the competency-based pilot members who have spoken at the visit or the feedback sessions around the state. We've also submitted survey data opposing the lack of innovation or continued vision for the state of Illinois. I've submitted a letter that I've placed at your desk, as well as linked to our agenda for the public to consume, and then been in contact with Brent Clark, the director of the Illinois Association of Superintendents for school administrators, Dr. Jacoby, the IASBO executive director, Jason Leahy, the IPA executive director, and Mr. Troy, I would ask that you engage with your IASB Kishawaki region and seek to get that on the advisory agenda, so that ISB hears our disappointment in the direction or the lack of direction that they're taking education in the state of Illinois. We saw Illinois go from the very bottom in terms of innovation to the middle of the pack in two years under Dr. Smith, and I am extremely disappointed that Dr. Ayala is pushing us backwards instead of forwards in that regard. As you know, this is very, very passionate about driving education forward and reforming the broken system that we work in, and this is one of the, an oversight, in my opinion, on the state of ISB. Any questions on that topic? I'll calm down for the next section, I promise.
Not strongly worded, you know.
Alright, well, the next one is actually something very exciting for our, exciting for our community. As you know, Mr. Johnson and the Village have been pushing very hard for continued economic development around the Route 47 corridor, which we have been extremely supportive of in the past, even considering and taking on allowing tax incentives for high wind and to bring industry into Huntley that will generate property taxes for us when those expire. And the debate has always been, from the business community, is where are the hotels? Business will come when the hotels arrive. And the hotels say, "Where's the business?" Will come when the businesses arrive. Well, we have two hotels that have been proposed in Huntley, a Holiday Inn Express that is proposed at Creutzer and 47 behind the Walgreens, and then as well, a Hampton Inn that is proposed down at the I-90 corridor. And what started with the Hampton Inn requesting a 10-year tax abatement incentive from the taxing bodies, when the new opponent, when Holiday Inn entered the conversation, that went to five-year, to both hotels proposing no tax incentives, which is a huge win for the taxpayers of our community, as well as the economic development of the Route 47 corridor. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that we're very pleased with the direction and love the competition that is taking place. We're all going to win from that, regardless of the direction that the Village Board takes, whichever hotel that they approve. They will only approve one if I've committed to that. So, yeah, I appreciate the work of Dave Johnson and his team at the Village for their continued development of our community. Hopefully, the businesses will follow. And then the next, we have two opportunities that I'm eager to hear how you, if you'd like to move forward with some of them. The National School Board Association Conference will be in Chicago in April. We annually attend the IIII conference, and it's our greatest source of, the school board, it's your greatest source of professional learning, and we hold that event in very high regard. But the National School Board Conference is coming to town for the first time in many years, in years that I've actually been paying attention to, to the School Board Conference. And I would just welcome any of you who are interested in potentially attending that conference to engage with me after the meeting or in the next week or so, and we can see about comparing the quality of professional learning that the National School Board Conference brings. I know it does a lot for all of you in this voluntary role that our, when Heineman's friends thought that you were well compensated for, but it is a voluntary role, and we take this professional learning opportunity very seriously and know that you do as well. So if you're interested in that conference, I would be more than happy to join you down there and go learn a little bit myself. So let's keep talking about that. So, let's, let's keep talking about that. And then finally, the Huntley Chamber of Commerce Expo is on March seventh at the Huntley Park District. We, again, will be having a District 158 booth to share some of the, the accomplishments that we've made over the last year, and engage some of our citizens in, in just learning about the school districts who may not engage with us on a, on a daily basis. So, we'll be looking for people that will help us man that booth. We'll be asking district administration, as well as you, if you can offer us an hour or two to come hang out at the booth and, and speak to some of our citizens as they go through and, and learn from the, the hundred or so businesses that are represented. We have a number of our students who will be performing from the Heinemann Honor Band, Heinemann Choir, the High School Jazz Band, Huntley Cheer Association will be there to perform, there'll be a dog show. Two Gingers will be emceeing the event with our very own Mr. Bill Guerin, as he always does. And it's a good event, it's a lot of fun, it's a great opportunity to engage in some really, really enjoyable conversation with our community. So, I'll send a Google form out to you to sign up for time. Hopefully, it works out in your schedule, you can spend a little time with us there. March seventh. All right? Was that, are there any questions? I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your passion on those topics as well. Next item is, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay. There being none, we move on to nineteen, the consent agenda. I will make a motion to approve the items listed in the consent agenda. Is there a second? Second? I heard second from Ms. Melendi. Let's have a roll call. Oh, maybe it's like, like when a plane goes by, you don't, you know. Okay.
Mrs. Maiarino.
Ms. Maiarino. Got it.
Mr. Fleck.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Guerin.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
I think we got all the votes. I was talking over you, and I'm sorry, Ms. Doc, did you get them all? Okay, motion carries unanimously. At this time, I would like to invite our new principal at Heinemann, Brian Faulkner, to come up and say a few words. Welcome.
I too did not prepare anything. I like to speak off the cuff. First off, thank you for this opportunity. It is, I'm coming home, is the way I keep saying it to everyone. And, you know, funny story is that when I knew of the principal opening at Heinemann, I told my wife about it, and she looked at me and she said, well, have you already applied or do you need to go log in and do that right now? And she said, it's a no-brainer that you're gonna put in for, you at least have to try, 'cause you've been talking about that place ever since you left. And it's been eight years, and this is, this is a home to me. There's a family feel in this district that I cannot explain unless you were a part of it. And that's what made me want to come back. The innovation, the, the progress this district has continued to make not only fits in with me educationally, but it fits in with me personally. And it is an absolute honor to come back and call myself the principal of Heinemann Middle School. I'm giddy right now thinking about it, and I just, I can't say enough, and I can't say thank you enough for this opportunity. I, I'll say this, I, I told my girl, I have three beautiful girls, and I told them that I, I'm going back to Heinemann Middle School, and my twins are a little bit older now, and they said, is that the place with the big hawk in the gym? I said, yes. And they said, Dad, we loved that place. So, it's like, and my entire family is happy for me, and they knew how much I loved this place and adored this place, and, and we celebrated, and I'm here. I can't wait to get started. I gotta pull myself back a little bit, 'cause we still got a long way to go, but I am just so appreciative of this opportunity, so thank you. I look forward to standing here again next year around this time, and highlighting our awesome students and our awesome staff and everything that we are doing in this district that makes it a highlight district. So, once again, thank you for this opportunity, I really appreciate it.
Okay, next item, we have a few action items. Let's start with twenty point one, supplemental purchase orders and supplemental accounts payable. Mr. Altmeier, is there anything you need to highlight? Okay. With that, I will make a motion to approve the supplemental purchase orders and supplemental accounts payable in the amounts listed in the agenda. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Quagliano, this is a roll call.
Mr. Quagliano. Mr. Fleck.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Guerin.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Maiarino.
Okay, motion carries. Item twenty point two is the Main Stage Theatrical Supply Inc.'s proposal for lighting for the Black Box Theater construction, Mr. Rencasek.
This is a component of the owner furnished items for the Black Box construction project that's underway, and this is for the design and installation, furnishing, a bunch of hardware that's technically high-level, that would, this company would then also commission into the Black Box Theater. And we invited Mr. Nate Knappke to join us, who could talk a little bit more if you would need more information.
Okay. Welcome.
One day Doug will get my name right. It's Knappke. It's, no worries. So, I am the technical director for the Performing Arts Center. Task with that is the addition of the Black Box Theater. With that, we've put together some proposals as far as lighting, A, B, that kind of thing. Specifically with the lighting, the lighting is spec'd out to be an ETC product. So, ETC is electronic theater control. That is basically the industry standard across the board. So, every, every, I would say, every high school. The PAC actually is not an ETC-based, based facility, and we'll get back to that. But any, any high school, college, anything of that nature, they're using this ETC product. Okay? So, bring me back to, the PAC is not an ETC-based product. Four years ago, our main dimmer system went down. It was not ETC. When I went to find support for that system, I was, I was in all kinds of trouble. I could not find support from the company that installed that system, I could not find support from the actual company that, that made that system, they no longer do theatrical work, et cetera, et cetera. That's when I reached out to Main Stage. That was shortly after I took this job, so five years ago. Main Stage was the only company that, that A, seemed to care, and B, was able to support us in a, a very timely manner. They're right across the border in Wisconsin, able to overnight equipment, et cetera. So, then going back to this ETC-based product, ETC is a worldwide company, they're also based out of Wisconsin. The pricing for that equipment is basically standardized. Just because they have such a, a firm grip on that market, the only real cost savings that you get is from your supplier. So, my relationship with Main Stage over the last five years, we have phased out most of our Levitan-based equipment into ETC for the PAC. And that is, again, a process that Mark and I have been working on since I've taken this job, which has formed a really, really great relationship with Main Stage. I know that we are the lowest, the lowest bracket of, of resupply through Main Stage that they can offer us. And, and quite frankly, when I do price out equipment on a, on a, if something goes down, things of that nature, Main Stage has always provided the lowest price. That's, that's kind of how I landed with Main Stage, and in that relationship with them. And that's why, moving forward, I would like to continue that relationship, and, and looking at the proposed design that they have given us, and in going through the equipment list, I feel that their pricing, based off of what we've done in the past, and, and kind of just the general market of theatrical equipment, is, is well in line, and, and quite frankly, probably one of the best prices we can get. So, based off of that, what questions would you have for me?
Any questions?
I don't know if it's so much a question, but I appreciate you coming in, 'cause you give a little bit of depth and breadth to the topic overall.
Sure.
I didn't know that kind of information beforehand, so for me, it's valuable to hear. It almost sounds like there is no other choice to go with other than this company. From, from a support level, from a, it seems like the options are beyond limited, they're almost nonexistent, from what you're saying.
Obviously, we can, we can source product from other companies. So, obviously, there are other theatrical companies out there. However, the, the support end of it, and there has been multiple occasions where I'm, I'm three days away from a show, and let's say, let's say one of our nodes go down. So, we have a distributed data system called DMX, that's how we control fixtures. If I have one of my nodes go down, approximately four thousand dollars, and it happens, without that node, the, the PAC is rendered useless, basically. No lighting fixtures will work. So, as far as turnaround time, and being able to ship product very quickly, that's, that's super important to me. So, in, in that case, I, I would agree with you, that in my mind, I, I see no other option.
And is the, how would you grade out the, the amount of equipment, I guess? Is the, is this excessive? Is this acceptable? Does it, is it a minimalized amount of lighting that's needed for this Black Box Theater?
So, so the Black Box aspect in this design is infrastructure. And at that point, we are, I would say, in line a hundred percent with what a high school Black Box infrastructure for lighting should be. I would say that we are definitely in, we're not at the lowest end, but we're not at the highest end. So, we're, we're, we're sitting very comfortably. I would say that you are going to see this same exact infrastructure in, in various, the smaller college programs, but I, I would not say it's excessive by any means.
Okay. Thank you. I wanna echo what Mr. Troy had said. Thank you for educating us on this.
This is one of the two events I've ever missed in the PAC. There's currently a band concert going on. My students are taking care of it, but...
We feel even more honored to have you there, and I, and I do appreciate it. But, but I think not only, as Mr. Troy said, there are no other options, but this, this happens to be a pretty good option if there were others. So, that's what's important for me to hear. So, thank you for, for that. Any other questions or comments? All right? Thank you, sir. Wonderful. Thanks. Well, again, for, for public comment purposes, I, I wanna save for that. We have, we have a policy on the meetings, so if you have a public comment, you can sign up for that and bring that. We do have a chance for public comment in just a few minutes. Okay? Thank you. Okay. So, with that, I will make a motion to approve the proposal from Main Stage Theatrical Supply Incorporated for the amount listed in the agenda.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Troy. Let's have a roll call.
Mrs. Maiarino. Mr. Fleck.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Guerin.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Twenty point three is Resolution of Non-Reemployment, Resolution Number 2020-02-03A. Mr. Zera, is there anything you'd like to bring to our attention?
There's nothing to add, just asking for the board to approve the resolution of non-reemployment as presented. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody's had a chance to review that and talk about it. Is there any, any other comments? Okay. Very good. Then I will make a motion to approve Resolution of Non-Reemployment as listed in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gentry. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Guerin.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mrs. Maiarino.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we're on to item twenty-one, which is Public Comment. So, if you would like, well, please, I, I'm sorry, we got to follow the policies, please come up, if you can fill out the form, Mr. Armstrong, I can get that over to you, and then if you can, yeah, you can fill it out later, but please give us your name, the town you're from, and then your comment.
Mary Lamentia from Woodstock, Illinois.
Okay.
Do you have an approved supplier list?
Okay, I'm gonna refer, just like I referred you for Dr. Budzinski for that prior question, I refer you to Mr. Rencasek, who handles a lot of that as well. So, after the meeting, those two gentlemen should be available to answer your questions.
And then coming to these meetings, and you're going over all this stuff, is there somewhere that I could find out the details of what you're reviewing and what you're voting on?
Yes, actually, these are posted according to statute. Ahead of the meeting, the entire packet is made available to the public, including these links.
And the details involved in each one?
And the details, and you can come, you can go on to the website and take a look at that, and, and you see what we see.
Okay, great, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Mr. Armstrong.
I see none.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, it is eight twenty-six. I will make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Guerin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.